I'd like to call the order of the work session, May the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. The implication will be provided by Tony Miles, Transforming Greatness Ministry. The Pledge of Allegiance will be provided by Commissioner Denny Collins. Please stand.
Good evening. The Apostle Paul wrote to John. He should offer prayers for our leaders. So first, with these, chapter, verses twenty. First of all, then I urge that in treaties and prayers, missions and thanksgiving, be made on behalf of all men, for kings and all who are in authority, so that they, so that we may lead a tranquil and quiet life in all godliness and dignity. This is good and acceptable in the sight of our gods, our saints. So, also in the book of Proverbs, twenty-nine, it says, "When the righteous, the people, but when the wicked are in power, they grow." Thus, Father, Lord God, Creator of both heaven and earth, we pause at the opening of this verse, give thanks for all the blessings, material and immaterial, have lavished upon us, individual and sector. We thank you, Lord, for the freedom, together and in the steps, the needs of Bradley County and the departments which are with us. Lord, we thank you for the long and rich, Bradley County and the many advantages given. Lord, we thank you for those who have a willing heart, soon responsible, before you can leave and direct affairs and business in Bradley County, and to serve in sacred public trust, ask of them. Lord, we bestow them in their lives, both public and private. We pray for Daniel, Katie, Mike, Thomas Cry, Dewey Alford, Jalen Blake, Denny Collins, Howard Thompson, Scott Gilbert, Bobby Goins, Cindy Slater, Tim Mason, Tommy Leford, Josh Rogers, Gilbert, and of course, our mayor, Harry. Jesus wrote that if anyone desires wisdom, let them ask of God. We humbly ask, Sister, Spirit, Corporal, Bradley, ask that to pay in everything, good in thou art, all of our departments, ask Spirit, guide them, especially Allen. Lord, we ask blessings, faith and ethics, civil, justice, moral, one, that Bradley County place a spirit and operate both spiritual and economic, a place to where poor are not forgotten, the weak are not oppressed, and the elderly honored and the young are nurtured, where there is quality, awe, place of justice and respect for everyone, that there will be respect and high regard for our peace and law and public safety persons and citizens who are responsible for their lives and that will be fair, just in all their dealings in every sector. Lord God, we ask that the long and deep historic ties and the sacred heritage which Bradley County shares with the churches within the county will be made effective and will foster growing awareness, hearts and minds of peace, all citizens of their nation, for you, your abiding presence in their lives, both. Lord God, we glorify yourself in Bradley, in this land and in all the earth. We ask you, Lord God, door renewed, free and bigger, all of our places of work, that we thrive in, as well as all public, private and social, our business, largest, that thrives and beeth, as the psalmist will, blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord. So, Lord, we ask that the declaration held, made here this day and every day, will be for the public welfare. We ask that Bradley County will live up to all this potential and become the place where it is purpose and which. Yes, Lord, that what occurs in Bradley? So astounding, in your blessings, so great, that the cup of the county will overflow all of the cities across the country, Austin, State of Tennessee, and all of America. Lord, we ask that what is about to take place in Bradley and the attention of many and bring in an influx of capital, investment and resources, both material and immaterial, that Bradley County will be an example to counties across the land of what it looks like, favor and blessing for loving which others who wish emulate into. So, Lord, through your holy Spirit, God, bless our county and other silver and public servants, and God bless Bradley County, all these blessings and as all these, in the function, in the authority, and in the power of our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I'd like to welcome the mayor of Charleston, Mayor Latimore. Thank you for coming. A report from the county mayor, Mayor Davis, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. I trust everyone had a great Memorial Day weekend. I don't have anything to report tonight unless someone has something for me.
Thank you very much. Well, now, move along to the reports from the committees and or districts. We'll start on our left with Commissioner Rogers, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing to report tonight.
Commissioner Ledford.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things. Me and Denny and Scotty just come from a nursing home committee meeting. I just wanted to compliment Scott Oliver and all the staff over at the nursing home on what a great job they're doing over there. Tim's not feeling well tonight, so he asked me to report on the tire take back is Saturday, this coming Saturday, at the Justice Center from eight to noon. And Alan, if you have anything other about that, Keep America Beautiful, on the tire take back. He said to ask you if you wanted to say anything about it. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Slater, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to say congratulations to the Walker Valley High School Girls softball team for winning the state championship. And I believe Commissioner Collins could correct me if I'm wrong. That's the first state championship for Walker Valley in any of the sports, is it not?
They've had bowling.
Bowling.
And they have federal, state, individual wrestling.
Congratulations to those girls. That's it.
Commissioner Goins, please.
Fifth district, student way. I wish it had had bowling when I was in school. I might have stayed in there, but, you know. I'll stay in there longer, you know. Anyway, I'm just trying to be funny, that's all. That's all I have.
Okay, Commissioner Thompson, please.
I'd like to ask Commissioner Hughes if we, have we said anything about the meeting we had, our board meeting? I missed the last meeting. I just wondered if we brought it forward or what we had decided or was going to ask to do anyway. Oh, okay. That's all right. We can do it later. I just thought, I didn't know if you brought it up yet or not.
I believe we brought it up, but I can't remember exactly what we done with it.
Okay.
We voted on it and it passed, yes. So as far as the mayor was going to look into that, I do.
Did you, did you inform the mayor of what we talked about?
Yes, yes, we did. And we, at that same meeting, we voted on it and it was approved to, for him to be asked to look forward.
Did he have any answers?
I don't know. Mayor, did you have any answers? Cut the middleman out.
The motion just, I happen to have it here, says, "I move, we formally request the mayor to explore the costs associated with having the city of Cleveland or the contractor clear the property to the property line. I've asked the city to give me an estimate, and I've asked the contractor to do the same." Not got an answer back yet, but it's rained every day since, so.
That's going forward. I appreciate that. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Gilbert, please.
Yes, I went to Bradley County's Memorial Day ceremony at Waterville Baptist. It was a really nice ceremony. Melissa Woody done an amazing job leading it. And there was some ladies there that put flowers down by each flag, each different services' flag, and it was awful. It was a really good time. I enjoyed being there. The first one I've ever been to. It was really nice. It's all for me.
Commissioner Winters, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, thank you Pastor Miles for that prayer. It does us all well to hear the depth of your prayers, and it also does us well to hear our names called in prayer. I've never forgot what it's like to hear my mother's name in prayer, as she shared mine and my grandmother's. So, thank you. Thank you for that. I think we should remember the King family of Bradley Central High School, Brody King. My granddaughter was in a class the day before he died as he presented a paper. That affects multi-generations, the loss of a young man in the middle of his sophomore year, I think, who loses life with an automobile accident. So, Brody King, I think that's been in the paper. But for all of us, let's remember that family. Also, the Legal Legislative Committee will be meeting within the next two weeks. I'd like for the committee to look at what times would be best for you all. Give it to Lori. We'll look at that this week. We'll have that meeting. There's several items that have come up that we already have beginning to move on that agenda. If you have something you'd like to have the Legal Legislative Committee to look at, please share that with Lori or myself, and we'll work that into our review. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Collins, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to piggyback on Commissioner Slater and Commissioner Winters, congratulations to Walker Valley Lady Mustangs, Lauren Lindberg, April Richardson, Athletic Director Mike Turner. I know that's, that's something that's a phenomenal accomplishment for that program, and obviously Commissioner Winters brought up the loss of life of a young man on a campus. That's just an incredibly difficult thing to process, not just for the campus, but obviously for the families. So continue to pray for them, and thank you for the prayer. I think it's, you know, it's very heartfelt and thoughtful. Thank you so much for that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Blake, please.
Hey, Mr. Chairman. Also, thank you for that. I appreciate that. Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee will meet at eleven a.m. this Friday here in the Commission Room. That's per the budget counter. It will be handling, doing the amendments. And usually we meet on a Monday, but to help the mayor's office. And I think we did that last year or the year before. We started doing it on the time constraint, and we got the amendments today. Also, Finance will meet on June fifth, per the budget counter, at ten a.m. This is where we, the mayor's proposal is going to come to us next week, and the Finance Committee will go over that, make any additions or deletions or what were made there. Those times have been adjusted. Also, Mr. Chairman, I had an opportunity to go up to the County Commission Association meeting. Commissioner Gilbert was there as well, and they went over a lot of things, but there's that one, what I call the real meeting, where they go over all the laws that were passed by the General Assembly this past session. I gave Lori a copy of what was presented to us, and she's got it, I guess, in PDF format. So if you want to look at what they presented to us, they basically go over all the stuff that affects us. And the one that they spent a lot of time on was the one that we've talked about for the last couple of years, and that's the recordation tax. And it did, it passed, I guess, but didn't get funded, behind the budget or whatever the terminology they use. But they seem to think that it's got momentum. I would encourage us all to talk to our legislators up in Nashville, or even legislators in other counties. It's vitally important. I think we estimated it seven hundred and fifty thousand per annual basis on that. So it's important that they understand the ramifications of that. The problem that they said was that they couldn't fund it, which I find is interesting, considering if they have a rainy eight-day fund, over two hundred and fifty, three hundred million dollars. So, be that as it may. But again, if you want what we brought back from Gatlinburg, just ask Lori. She's got it in PDF format. One of the things also that came up, Mr. Chairman, is kind of, we don't normally talk too much about what's going on at the federal level, but I thought that I may need to bring this up, just as due diligence and whatever. As county commissioner, I wrote this out to make sure I got all my points here. As county commissioners, our job is to ensure Bradley County has the resources it needs to grow, prosper, and service residents effectively, whether it's maintaining roads, upgrading schools, strengthening emergency services. These projects require careful financial planning, and municipal bonds play a critical role in making them possible. Excuse me. Right now, municipal bonds are tax exempt. When you purchase a municipal bond, you do not pay taxes on it, allowing us to invest in Bradley County effectively. By far, but far away in Washington, D.C., way up there in D.C., they are discussing about limiting or even removing this exemption. If this happens, the financial burden shifts to us, meaning higher costs for the same critical infrastructure projects we rely on. Schools, roads, and emergency services could face unnecessary setbacks all because of a decision made up in Washington, Washington, D.C., made far from the communities that they impact the most. Right now, investors do not pay federal income taxes, I just mentioned, on the interest that they earn from municipal bonds. These exemptions help us secure lower interest rates when borrowing money for essential local investments. But if these exemptions are reduced or eliminated, investors will demand higher rates, higher interest rates to compensate for the low, for the lost tax benefits. That means borrowing becomes more expensive, stretching our budget and forcing tough decisions, potentially leading to higher taxes. And I know none of us want to increase taxes. What will probably happen is we will delay projects, your infrastructure improvements, and as I said, delay essential services. Reserving this exemption is not just about financial policy. In my opinion, it's about the future of Bradley County and all municipalities that have to issue bonds in order for their projects, about keeping our roads safe and our schools strong and our community thriving. I thought I'd also put some numbers to paper here. You have, should have, on the next page, a quick example that I put together on the last time that we borrowed money or we issued a bond. I'll go through it real quickly, Mr. Chairman. As you know, the last time we borrowed money or we issued a bond was for the Pi Center. It was eighteen million dollars. It was done in ten million and two million dollar increments for logistic purposes or credit purposes. I think Mayor can tell you more about that. But basically, it totaled up to eighteen million with our portion to the city. But basically, here's, here's the meat of what I'm trying to say. Scenario one, with the tax increase, that was when we issued the bond. Investors bought the bond at a lower rate, around three percent, because they didn't have to pay federal income taxes on the interest they earned. Over the twenty years, the county paid, and this is an estimate, but it's about five point four million in interest, making the total cost of ours twenty-three point four million. Now, if this exemption is removed by Congress, investors would, would demand and they would receive a higher interest rate. I put in a scenario of a point and a half. One and a half points right there makes all the difference in the world, and I'll show you how, to compensate for the loss of the tax benefit. Over twenty years, the county would pay eight point one million in interest, increasing the total cost to twenty-six point one. That's an extra two point seven million dollars. Two point seven million dollars increased because of this. This additional twenty-two point seven million dollars would have to come from us. We would have to pay more in interest, obviously. We wouldn't, wouldn't want to obviously increase our tax rate. So what it probably would mean is delaying projects. And probably, when I say probably, probably school projects come first. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I understand that we have a policy about sending letters. I know we, we said we'd only do it, but I think I strongly believe that that this issue demands our attention and warrants direct communication with our federal legislators. It is essential that they understand the impact that this policy change has on our community. Mr. Chairman, this week, I'll coordinate with Lori to draft a formal letter outlining our concerns, and we'll request that this letter be included on the agenda at the next voting session. I know we don't like sending letters, but I think Congressman Fleishman and our two senators need to know how it impacts not only us, but it'll impact the city of Cleveland and all the counties in the state of Tennessee. So if you would, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to put that on our voting session. When I get with Lori tomorrow, Thursday, I'll have that letter for everybody to review. All right? I went through that quickly, but I do think it's important that if they change that up there in Congress, how it affects it. With that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori, go ahead and put her on. Commissioner Alfred, please.
Yes, a couple of points today. Second district's doing well, but I just wanted to get the commission's opinion on the email that was sent out recently referencing Bradley County Schools picking up students and busing. Have y'all seen that email that was sent out? No worries. They're going to be picking up students now. I think out of, my understanding, it's going to be out-of-zone kids. So they're going to start busing out-of-zone kids to Bradley High School, our elementary schools. I don't know how many of y'all read that email, but I have some real concerns about that, because it's just what Mr. Blake was just talking about, because come twenty-six, more than likely twenty-six, twenty-seven, they're going to be coming for us for new schools. So my concern is this, if we keep bringing in out-of-zone kids and we keep adding on to schools, it's just costing us money. It's costing the taxpayers of Bradley County money, and not the city people, but so much, because we have to give them half of everything we borrow. So my concern is if they start busing, which they are going to start busing, out-of-zone kids, which is, to me, is just absolutely asinine. And they say they're not going to change any bus routes, but that's immaterial. Bus routes is, are bus routes, period. But when you start picking up out-of-zone kids to take to our elementary schools, and we're having to add elementary schools or adding classrooms, we got a problem, folks. And I promise you, in twenty-six or twenty-seven, this is just an old man talking, you're going to be asked to do a big tax increase. And I'm talking about a big one. So you looking at a new school, say thirty, forty million dollars, city gets twenty. You're looking at a sixty million dollar loan that we're going to be facing. So my concern is, why do we keep building schools for out-of-zone kids? And that's the majority. If y'all don't know it, I did some figures on it. We got, and this is probably not very good to bring it up, but there's eight hundred, eight hundred elementary kids out of zone in our elementary schools. Thirteen hundred altogether in the high school, junior high, and elementary schools. So we're teaching, we're educating thirteen hundred kids that are out of zone. So it's just something I want you folks to think about, because to me, it's going to bite us in the fanny one of these days, pretty soon. It's going to be a major problem. And I don't know why they're doing it, but, you know. That's, I guess that's a question for Miss Cash and her people. But to me, when you start busing out-of-zone kids, we're really looking at a bad situation.
Commissioner Thompson.
I know this is not a popular lane in rezoning. But is, is the county talking about anywhere down the road rezoning?
You asking me that?
Yes, sir.
You can't get anyone on the school board to even bring the subject up.
That's right.
So it's, it's out of the question, and there's not a whole lot we can do about it, except look at budgets and things, because sooner or later, you got to borrow the money to build schools or add on. You already, we spent, what, fifteen million at Hopewell? They got forty out-of-zone kids. That's two classrooms. North Lee has two hundred and fifty-nine. Forty-nine percent of the North Lee students are out-of-zone kids. Forty-nine percent. And we just built two classrooms there a couple of years ago.
If we rezone, would that take care of that?
We can't. We don't have the authority to rezone.
The county don't?
No.
Well, you mean they don't have authority?
We don't. It's the school board.
Well, that's what I'm talking about.
Oh, yeah, they could. Yes, sir.
Why don't?
Well, that's a question for them.
Well, let's invite them up here and ask them. I guess you could do that, but I mean, it, it, you know, why talk about it when you got, when you got a way to take care of it?
Mr. Howard, I'm fully on board with you there, but talking about it and doing something about it, it's two horses of a different color.
I know it ain't popular, but I ain't very popular anyway, so it don't make no difference.
Well, it ain't popular. It's something that's been done for a long time. But what my concern is, sooner or later, it's going to hit us hard. And you're talking about in twenty-six, it's going to hit you. Everybody up here will be forced to either vote for a tax increase or find you another job, not a commissioner, more than likely.
Talking about tax increase, Commissioner Milon, have you got that on your mind? Tax increase. I just wondered, I mean, papers sitting here, they won't write it in the paper, just say yes or no.
Hold on, Mayor, did we hear that on our?
Well, nobody don't want to answer, do they?
Well, that's my point. That's exactly what I'm talking about, Howard. Everybody gets cricket mouth, or, you know, nobody wants to talk when it comes to things like this.
It's got to the point that you're going to have to. That's why you, that's why you raise money for infrastructure is tax.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
Well, first of all, we are in an appraisal year, so we're going to get the certified tax rate.
Yeah.
By the way, I think we're going to get that next week. So we, we have to adopt, and they told us in Gatlinburg, we have to adopt the certified tax rate.
Yeah.
That's the rate we'll go with.
That don't mean your taxes will go up, though. We won't be getting any more tax. We will on the next tax increase.
We'll get the growth.
Yeah, get the growth money.
All right.
Are there any growth money this year?
Nothing, yeah.
All these houses, we ain't got no growth money? What, what happened to it? It sounds like worst in D.C. They're spending it some, some way. Okay, I just want to burn it out.
Just one, one more question. Mayor, could you tell us, and I think you've told me before, twenty-six, twenty-seven be the first time we can go to the bond market?
I believe it's 27.
27?
I believe.
We can go to the bond market. So we can't really borrow money until 27?
That's when bonds get paid off and the cost drops down enough to do some new borrowing, yes.
Just roughly, Mayor, if we borrowed 60 million dollars, what could our bond payments be, you think? Been in it a long time, y'all give me a rough idea.
I'm not gonna do that. I don't know. And, and the rates are still not real good right now, so hopefully by then they'll be a lot better, but.
But do you think our growth rate will cover it?
When we get to 27, if we, if they follow the plan that's in place of paying cash as we go until then, there will be an amount that will probably have to be borrowed, but it should be a manageable amount within the budget. 27 and 28, that was the plan. Now their plans tend to change from time to time, but that's how it was laid out to me and that's what we're working on with the cash part up front for the first four years.
But that doesn't include a lot of increase in size of schools, does it?
Well, that's several. I mean, we're doing the one, but they're doing three or four in this first phase. And then they come back with the new school, elementary school, uh, along about time that we can borrow. Hopefully not before then, you know? But we've got two more years to get these paid off. This next budget year, it doesn't drop off, I can tell you that.
That's the point I'm trying to make, Mr. Howard, is the fact that two years from now, if we didn't take out of zone kids, would we need to borrow that money?
Well, it really, it really concerns me in our area out there, they're building 500 homes. And, uh, I don't know what they, what they saying, there's two kids, they, on an average, two kids per home or something like that. I don't know on average. But anyway, uh, you're talking about a, another, another school. So, uh, that really concerns me and, uh, not only just in that area, but Prospect area and everywhere, you know, they're building up. And, uh, so I know Park View's gonna be able to addition on, they've got the money for that. And that's good in that area. Of course, that's not gonna help Mission Avenue or Oak Grove, schools like that. But, uh, anyway, uh, we've got a problem coming up with all this building going on. If they sell all these houses, we, we have without a problem. That's all I got.
Mr. Winters.
I'm a, I'm a principal, former principal, that lived with many of my students being city kids at county school. I know what it's like and I know many of the best students we had were city kids that came to county school. All, all I know, and we went through that era, it may come back, is that if you pay city and county taxes and there's room in a building, you have a right to take those students. I took those students, uh, and Bradley Junior grew with those students. You get today, $7,200 per child. So every child that's coming from the city to a county school is bringing money with them from the state. You gotta figure those $2 million plus you have 100 going in there. So I had to, I had to make a move when a superintendent came to me and told me that we could not take anymore. Now, when you don't have enough room, you don't have to take a city kid. If you have room, uh, that city student, parents pay city or county taxes and has a right to the, come in there. But I'd had to turn away a kid that was coming to Bradley Junior. That went to Cleveland High School and was the best quarterback that they ever had in that era. Was a great student. I've known that family and I see them all the time and knew I had to turn that boy away because, only because there wasn't room in it. That's what I had to do. So in, in reality, growth brings a benefit to the city people and the county people, the city people paying both taxes to be able to participate in those schools. But when they bring their money, it brings at this point, $7,200 with them, uh, per state. And that money comes in to the, to the county. So it, um, as a county commissioner, that has city residents, we need to honor the fact that they are county residents at the same time when they want to go to school. That's the challenge we got. And your, your rights win. You're right what you're saying, that there's a financial cost here. When that city's looking at its money, county's looking at its money, but the human factor that's in the middle of that, uh, as long as there's room in that building, that, that kid is in that district, uh, it's awfully tough to turn that kid around. But that's, that's the reality with, the challenge with the numbers coming in. We're pushing to bring families in. Chamber of Commerce, sitting back there loves to have a lot of new families coming in, bringing new jobs. We've got jobs for those, making, making that move. Pi Center's trying to get the younger generation to be able to stay here and work and have good jobs. We're working on all that. So it is something that we'll have to come, have to deal with all the way along. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Thompson.
Uh, we, we've got a problem with immigrants too, right? Bought a few percentage wise, uh, city and county. So I know that money follows those too, follows every kid, I reckon, but that's, uh, we've still got, we've still got that problem with, uh, help, help over population. That's all I have.
Chairman.
Josh, go ahead.
Commissioner, thank you, Chairman. Commissioner Alford, I'm, I got that email. I'm trying to find it through the thousand junk emails that I receive in my email inbox throughout the week. Could someone explain to me, like, if you have a kid at Valley View or if you have a kid out at Taylor, are they gonna be busing that student to, you know, North Lee? Are they gonna be busting the kid to Charleston, wherever? I don't remember seeing that in the email. I don't know if someone could explain that, those scenarios.
That's why I was hoping somebody would be here to explain it tonight, but there's not. But just a couple of things, uh, Mr. Winters. You, you keep talking about city kids helping Bradley Junior. Uh, don't tell me that Brad County kids aren't good students too. They can do just as well as any city kid. That, that, that is a false scenario that I don't like to hear from a commissioner. Second thing, state law says plainly, since city went on their own, and this has been ruled in all kind of court cases, if the city decide to go out on their own, like they did with their own school system, Bradley County does not have to take them regardless of whether there's room or not room. We do not have to take this, an out of zone kid. So when you say that, the other thing is you, you say fill that room up. You gonna fill that room up, what's gonna happen if a county kid comes and wants in that same school? Are you gonna kick the city kid out? No, you gonna build another classroom.
I think it's the close, the closest transportation, I think, is where they would go. If the, if the city's gonna pick, the county's gonna pick, I think you, you're not taking them. You're not taking a clerk across the county, you're taking them to the closest, closest city school.
Go ahead.
My understanding is that it is mainly related around the areas where annexation has taken place. Prospect, Hopewell, Park View. They will not take a Valley View child to North Lee. It is only bus routes that exist today. There is no bus route today taking children from Valley View to North Lee or Valley View to Park View. The route has to exist today.
Thank you for the clarification.
And the parent has to call the school, ask for the child to be enrolled. The principal will then call the, is it my, Doc McElvery, Terry McElvery over? Transportation to make sure there is a already existing route to pick that child up. But there is no cross zoning, what you're talking about.
Thank you, Commissioner Slade. I just wanted some clarity on that because I, I know from time to time, people will listen to these meetings and they'll hear it and read it in the paper or wherever. And I just didn't want people to start thinking we're gonna have the subway system or MARTA getting created here in Bradley County where we're gonna be busing children all across the county every single day.
Mr. Winters.
If, if you're overcrowded, if, if your school's full, you're not taking a city student. If your school, if your school is full, you're not taking a city student. But if you have room, you can take that city student, so it's not gonna be worth it.
Anyone else?
Prospect, Hopewell and Park View. Those, we're not adding on to Prospect, I don't believe. You're correct, we are adding on to those schools, to Pro, to Hopewell.
My point. We're having to add classrooms for that, not necessarily probably for population base, but.
Could, that's a possibility.
Anyone else?
Yep.
Go ahead, sir.
Just observation. So if a city, city kid comes to county schools, the city loses $7,200. Are they not fighting for their students? Do they like losing $7,000? You said 1,300 students, is that what you told me? When you say out of zone, do you mean city kids wanting to come to county or different county schools wanting to go to different county schools?
Kids that are out of zone in our county system right now. And maybe from Polk County, some of them, maybe from Macmin County, maybe from Meigs County, but most of them, 800 and something in the elementary schools are, are primarily city kids.
We, we, okay, you said Polk County? We, we don't have to take those children, do we?
Mr. Ledford, we're taking them, period.
We don't have to, is what I'm asking.
You don't have to take any of them.
That's our choice then. Okay.
You get 7,000 a kid, right?
Okay.
Multiply that by 1,300, how much money?
That's a lot of money, I agree.
Okay, how much is Prospect costing us? 15 million. Just that one school.
You're talking about Hopewell?
That one school doesn't cover the cost of the, I mean, not Prospect, Hopewell, costing us 15 million dollars. It doesn't cover, it doesn't match up.
Mr. Gilbert.
Mylan, I'd just like to clear what Mylan was talking about. What he was asking for is a letter. He's asking for the commissioners to write a letter to our federal representatives, right? To, to tell them not to be trying to put taxes on what money that we get through bonds. That's all you was asking, right?
When anybody issues bonds, that right now they're tax exempt. So you get interest off that bond, you don't have to file it on your income tax or your corporate taxes. If Congress does this, then they're gonna have to pay taxes on that interest. That'll make the, uh, cost of doing a bond is much more expensive and that makes it more expensive for us.
Thank you.
Commissioner Alford, anymore? Thank you very much, uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Hughes, please.
Mr. Chairman, I had, just gonna reference an email that I received. It's complaining about Sunset Gardens and Hillcrest. I know there's nothing and we, that we can actually do and I know this is mostly private property. Uh, I do believe the county attorney is looking into this matter, but there was one line in that email that really got my attention. It says, "These graveyard's are a disgrace to the community and to the families that have family and friends buried there." That, I mean, that's a bold statement. That says a mouthful when you say that about one of our own cemeteries. I, well, I shouldn't say our own, a local cemetery. I, I know, like I said, I know this is pending courts procedures, but when is enough gonna be enough? I mean, these are people that have family, part of our history. It's just a shame. So if anybody has any ideas, I'd love to hear them. I would love to hear something that we could do about this matter. Um, meanwhile, leave it alone. Otherwise, we had several complaints on Eads Bluff Road about Savannah running water, which I thought was a really good thing, but apparently they're not doing too good of a job as far as cleaning up. They're stopping up the, the, um, ditches and things, which is making it run across. Um, our roads superintendent was notified of it and is all over that. So commend him for that. And otherwise I have nothing else.
Thank you very much, uh, Commissioner Beatty, please.
I have nothing to report.
Okay. We'll move along to there being no agenda items. We'll move along to communication from the audience. I'll recognize and allow five minutes to anyone wishing to speak. Is there anyone that would like to speak? There being no, uh, no one that would like to speak, we will move along to the next meeting. Voting session Monday, June the 2nd at 7:00 p.m. here at the courthouse. Upcoming events, finance committee, May the 30th at 11 o'clock here at the courthouse. Tire Take Back Day, May the 31st at 8:00 a.m., noon at the sheriff's office.